1:06, the meeting will come to order. I will call the goal. Jesse McDonald.
Here.
Jesse Norde.
Here.
Jesse Corson.
Here.
Jesse Castle.
Here.
Jesse Diffler.
Hello.
Slater, here. From the left front.
Good to have you.
Bryce, for the... How's it going?
Hi.
I'm fine, Mr. Miller.
I'm fine, man.
President of the nation, who is whatever. One nation under God, individual, thirteen. Your motion to approve of the agenda?
Simply makes motion to approve of the agenda as presented.
Mark.
Motion by Justice Simply, seconded by Justice McConnell, to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Can everyone hear me?
At this time, we will turn it over to HR Director, Marocci. And Jessica, who can get this webinar going. Thank you. So, we have Ted, what's his last name? Andrew Juiski, I believe, here today. The committee interviewed him on Monday and had a great conversation here with him. I have added his resume for you guys again to address some questions he'd like. Ted is joining us from Ohio and he is a retired mayor and manager from Ohio and Michigan. So, we have selected him to go forward and give you that three days to... Do you know where our microphone is? For the... T-Hop. Yes. Thank you there. You can see us, just as it appears. My coffee cup.
President will pull the... Probably computer reboot.
Clear your cache and reboot. I care.
Hey, what? Clear your cache.
Clear your browser history.
Oh.
Still? Everything's been called to order and we're ready to go. Thank you. My friend? He came back. So, you want to take it? Is that this one or...
Yeah, it's the... Alan's calling him. Three, seven, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I think he goes with all.
You're only paying the... Andrew Juiski?
Hmm.
Don't see that G. Can you? Can you undo this camera or do you have to... I forgot this one, but we have to ask. Interview. There you go. We cannot hear you. You can hear us. Thanks.
All right, is this better?
Here. Can you hear us?
Is that better? I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Do we have on mute anymore? Do we have volume? Uh, that's real. Okay, up for me.
Can everyone hear me?
Almost up to the blast.
I know. Oh, that was a... Sorry, Ted. Sorry, Ted, we had it on mute. Can... Can you hear us now?
Now, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? I don't know.
All right.
Are you there?
There you go. Wonderful. Sorry about that. That was not our end, so don't... No strikes against you for technology.
All right, so everyone can see and hear me.
Yeah.
All right, great, great, great.
Welcome. Ted, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and then start firing questions at you if that's all right.
Okay.
Becky, our human resources director. She just sounded the camera. She did. And I'm the supervisor of Great Left, Brad.
I'm John Shipley, one of the trustees.
Wendy Corstens, treasurer.
Jim Castle, trustee.
Slater, clerk.
Tom McDonald, trustee.
And Timmy Norde, trustee.
Yes, I did a little research and I have all your names and I have all your positions and I know who's on the board and who's the treasurer and all that.
All right, well done. Wonderful. Well, we'll just go around and ask a few questions if you don't mind. You want to start out?
Sure. Ted, we've got a bio and your write-up of your experience. Can you take a few minutes to tell us about yourself and your background?
Sure. Well, I grew up in the Buffalo area, Buffalo, New York, and attended the University of Buffalo where I got a degree in business management and then moved to Cleveland, Ohio with the company I went to work for and obtained during that time an MBA from John Carroll University, which is a university here in the Cleveland area. And stayed in the private sector for, oh, 25 or 30 years and then decided that our city of Eastlake needed some help. We had a not-so-good mayor who was doing some bad things. So, I first ran for council and won. And then the next year, I ran for mayor and I served two terms as mayor, actually, two and a half terms because I filled in for their... For the unfinished term. And then, as all things come to an end, I lost one reelection and decided I was a pretty good manager. So, I went into city management and looked for city managers' jobs, which took me to Michigan, to Menominee, Michigan, where I served for over two years up in the Upper Peninsula. Very nice city, very, very good people, very, 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 very cold. So, I had an opportunity to go to New York State. I went to Cannon-Dagua, New York, also for about a year and a half, two years, and then moved back to Ohio to serve as city manager in Catice, Ohio, which was the birthplace of Clark Gable. It was a claim to fame. So, I served in... In the public sector, I worked at a bank, Key Bank, and I worked as a branch manager. I did marketing and sales for AT&amp;T and Sherwin-Williams. So, I have a variety of public service or private industry background in finance and banking and marketing. And then I have almost now 18 years of public experience as a mayor, as a city manager and a village administrator.
Thanks, Ted.
Okay, next question on the list. Please tell us what you know about Cascade Township and why you're interested in this position.
I'm just having just a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Could you repeat the question, please?
I sure can and I'll try to talk louder. Please tell us what you know about Cascade Township and why you're interested in this position.
Okay, very good, very good. Well, I did as much research as I could on the internet. I know Cascade Township is a very nice community, about 19,300 residents. You have a very good median income, over $100,000, and nice housing. Nice housing developments. You have a mixture of restaurants, businesses, hotels, and a good variety of things for people to do there. I looked at all the various departments and they're all the same as I'm used to dealing with. There's a assessing department, treasury department, finance department, building, parks and recreation, fire department. So, I looked at all your departments and was very impressed. I like your building department because you have several inspectors, electrical. You have building inspectors, many there to take care of not only the private homes, but also businesses. And I don't see that much in communities where they actually have a commercial building inspector. Your fire department, Cascade Fire Department, is what I'm used to. Actually, in Eastlake, we had over 30 firemen. I know you have 20 firemen there and a chief and also a inspector. So, that's a nice fire department. I assume that because there's no police department, a township is usually handled in by the sheriff's department. And I saw that there's a sheriff's department office. I don't know if it's in City Hall, but it's listed in your departments. And then I took a look at everybody's position, who's who, what name goes with which office. So, I like your staff. You have a nice staff, well-rounded. It's a well-rounded community. So, let me stop there and tell you why I would like to come there. As you know, I retired and I'm retired for two years. And I like retirement, don't get me wrong. I like playing golf. I like doing different things. But I still feel very useful. And I put my name on the Michigan Municipal League list to serve as an interim manager because that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to go somewhere for three, four, five months, whatever they need me. Keep the community going, keep the projects going while they look for a full-time manager and then stick around and help that full-time manager get started. So, it's perfect for what I'd like to do. Go somewhere for a short-term basis, see a new community, experience some new things and offer that community some of my experience and knowledge.
Thank you.
I'm going to go off the script, Ted. What you said, you've been 18 years working in municipal government, both as a mayor and manager. What did you find were the most interesting parts of your job and what were the most frustrating parts of your job?
Okay, well, let's say the most interesting things. I mean, every day was different. You never knew what you would run into, whether it be talking with a business owner or dealing with resident problems or helping employees solve a problem or give direction to employees. So, the thing I liked about best is it was always different, always interesting. I'm thinking now in my past and how many new people I met, members of industry, chambers of commerce, just all kinds of individuals in all kinds of instances. Probably the most frustrating was sometimes dealing with employee issues where you had to either discipline or terminate or give some further direction to problem employees, let's say that. And maybe frustrating in other degrees might sometimes be dealing with residents when they did not want to understand that you just couldn't do something for them. I wanted to help them, but it was impossible within the structure of local government to do what they wanted to do. But overall, overall, being a mayor, being a city manager, it was a very, very enjoyable experience.
Thank you.
What particular skills or traits do you have that will make you successful in this position? What's your superpower?
Well, first, I would say leadership, financial background, economic development. I'm good at all three of those areas. I feel I'm a good leader because employees like to talk to me. They will discuss their difficulties. Together, we can come to solutions and give direction. I'm always available. I'm not one of those managers who has a closed door. The door is open. Come and see me. Same thing goes for residents. Come and see me. Let's talk about it. Finance, definitely. I've done many, many, many budgets. Everywhere I've gone, we've had a balanced budget. We work with department heads to listen to their input and then develop a budget and either give it to council or, in the case of Cascade, give it to the trustees. So, I have a really, really good financial background. If there's things that are not going right, I can spot them and I can help solve the problems. And the third thing I'd say is economic development. Wherever I've been, I've always participated in bringing in new business, new things to the city. So, I'll say leadership, financial background and economic development. On the economic development, one more thing. Because I was in business and in banking, I feel very comfortable talking to business owners, CEOs, CFOs and discussing ways to bring their business into the community, even helping with ways to finance or get grants. I did see that Cascade has some good economic development programs and grants.
Thank you.
Hi, Ted. This is Tom McDonald. Thanks for getting your time today regarding the Ohio State-Michigan game. Oh, I'm sorry. That was going to be an icebreaker. That was going to be an icebreaker. We might have broken up. So, let me change the question here. The first 30 days are always difficult for anybody coming into a new position. There's new people, new departments, you've got the board. What you anticipate that you should be doing the first 30 days you come into Cascade? Do you really get familiar with that position?
Well, first of all, up until the last two years, Ohio State was annihilating Michigan.
Until the last year.
So, the last two years, we kind of put aside and say that's like a fluke. But I've learned over the years, I've learned over the years to stay away from politics and to stay away from sports rivalry. So, again, I'm just joking with you.
You're hired.
I'm just joking with you also. The first 30 days, you're right. You're new. You're new in the government. You're new in the community. So, what I always do is just take a wait-and-see attitude. Feel your way around. Introduce yourself to the employees. Get to know them a little bit. Get out and about. Go to the various departments and talk to them. But here's the important thing. Don't make any drastic decisions. Don't make any major decisions unless you have to. If you have to, you have to. Just kind of look at things and get a feel for the community and get a feel for the operation and then go ahead and do what you need to do. I think one of the benefits having me come in there is I'm new. New, I would take a fresh look at everything. I wouldn't have any preconceived notions. And again, take a good, fresh look at everything and how things are going. I'm going to recap by saying in the first 30 days, get acquainted with everybody, get acquainted with the community, get acquainted with the businesses and then go from there.
Thank you.
Hi, Ted. It's Timmy. When we were talking in the first interview, we talked a little bit about how flexible your schedule is. Three months, possibly four months. If it took us a little longer, you could stay on and help with the new transition with the new manager. You're still good?
Absolutely. I'm retired. I don't have any commitments. My kids are all grown and living on their own. So, whatever you need me for there, I would be there for you. And we also talked about the weekends and being available for 24 hours a day by phone. So, if you said, "I want you to start on Monday," I'll be there Monday morning.
Thank you.
I've been talking before. Do you have anything? If anyone else knows, I have one other question.
Ted, I see that there's a couple items here that are clear and dear to our heart. One is leadership style and the other one is management style. Where would you put yourself in that category? Where are you as a manager or where are you a leader and...
All right. Well, first of all, I will tell you this. I am by no means a micromanager. I don't like that style and I don't believe that works in government or business. So, the style I have is let the department heads run their departments. They were hired, they're capable individuals. Let them run departments, but know that I'm available and know that I'm watching over things. And I think that's important for department heads to know that, fine, you run your department the way you need to, but there's someone there you can talk to and there's someone there who, if needed, will be available. But I won't tell you what to do. I might make suggestions. I might look at things and say, "Hey, can we do it this way?" Or, "Have you thought of doing it that way?" But I'm pretty much a... Let the department heads do their job and I oversee everything and I'm available in case they need help. I believe in, if not weekly meetings, every other week, meetings with department heads where we get around the roundtable like you're at there and we kind of talk about what each department is doing, anything coming up. Do you need help from each other? And just so everybody knows what's going on in the community.
Thanks, Ted.
Leadership. Leadership is, again, it's sort of redundant, but it's being there when someone needs you. And being a leader, I'm not afraid to make a decision. Now, sometimes I make not a good decision, but that's what you live with. But if there's a decision to be made, I'll make it. One of the things I don't like to do is have things carry on for a year without making a decision. So, if you need someone there to look at things and say, "Yes, we should do it. No, we shouldn't do it. Let's go ahead with this project or that project. I'll make the decision for you." And again, when I say that, that's in conjunction with I... When I worked with village councils and it would be in conjunction with the trustees.
Thanks, Ted.
Yeah, I have another question. It's one question that there's two different routes, I guess, that I want to know. How do you handle or how have you handled in the past? I'll call it unfinished business. So, whether it be, the one route is a formal meeting, whether it be a board meeting or a different meeting and a topic comes up and it's unfinished. There isn't a final decision made with that. Or we're waiting for additional input to come back, whether it be from legal counsel or a department within the township. And then the other side of unfinished business would be residents. So, if a resident brought a complaint or a question to you, how do you follow up with them to make sure that that is finished out?
Well, I think that's an easy question to answer and I know sometimes people don't do it, but you follow it through right to the end. You don't leave it hanging there. So, if there's a subject that comes up at a trustee board meeting and you come back to me and say, "Well, we can't make a decision yet. We need some additional information or we need some additional input." It's my job to get that information to you in a timely manner so a decision could be made. So, what I'm saying is follow it through right to the end. Follow it through to a yes or a no, or we're done with this matter and we don't want to pursue it anymore. Now, with residents, it's very important to do a couple of things. First of all, when they call you, you have to return the phone call. And I make it my policy, if they call in the morning, to return the call by the end of the day. If they call in the afternoon, I can try to get it to them in the afternoon, if not, by the next morning. So, you have to answer the resident's request or questions either by phone or by email, whatever they choose to give you. And the same thing there is you have to follow it through to the conclusion. I mentioned earlier, there are sometimes residents will call and you can't help them, but you still have to give them an answer, yes or no. And a couple of things I'm thinking of is in... In Catice, when I was there, people wanted to have a tree cut down, say, on their tree lawn. And really, what they wanted to do was the village to cut it down and pay the expense. Well, the policy there was the village did not cut down trees on the tree lawn. So, I had to tell the resident, "I'm sorry, but we cannot cut your tree down." Now, the resident wasn't happy with the decision, but at least I got them the answer and I didn't leave them hanging there. And I could give you dozens of examples like that. But you have to get back to the people and you have to give them an answer, yes or no, and we can do it or we can't do it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Ted, this is a question that I like to ask and it's on the sheet. What do you consider your greatest strength?
I would say hitting the drive in a scramble on the golf course. Now, I would say, I put finance right there. I'm very good with numbers. I'm very good with finance. I'm very good at solving financial problems, bringing solutions to financial problems, having a balanced budget, making sure that the departments follow the budget and don't get off course. So, finance.
And then conversely, what would you consider a weakness?
When, you know, everybody has a weakness. I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm perfect. I sometimes will, I don't like to get... We were talking about earlier about decisions. I don't like things to drag on. Sometimes that can get frustrated in government because government likes to study and get more information and do this and do that. So, if anything, I would say sometimes you get a little frustrated. But I almost want to say sometimes, "Come on now, let's make a decision already."
I don't think that's a weakness. Thank you.
All right.
My next question is, what are you most proud in your career that you have accomplished?
Well, that's going to be an easy question. When I took over the city of Eastlake, we were $3 million in debt in our general fund. We were under state fiscal emergency because of the previous mayor and his financial doings. And we also had a minor league and still have a minor league baseball stadium that cost $50 million. So, what I'm most proud of is in working with the department heads, especially a finance director who I had was great. We got the city out of debt. When I left as mayor, the city was $890,000 in the good, in the general fund. The stadium debt went down from $50 million down to less than $20 million. And we did that with things like, unfortunately, we did have to have some layoffs because we were overstaffed. We did that with bringing tight budgets in and making even the police and fire departments stick to their budgets. And we both, Mike, my finance director and I, knew a lot about refinancing. So, we refinanced all the stadium notes, which was around the 2007, 2008 time period, from 8%, 9% loans to 1% to 2% loans. So, what I'm most proud of and people in Eastlake will tell you, I was a good fiscal manager. I got the city out of debt. I got it going in the right direction.
Ted, I was just going to ask you what you thought you're one of the most... I was going to ask what you thought one of the most difficult situations you had to deal with and how you dealt with it. I think you just covered that. Any others? That was a really interesting story and good to hear of what you did when you took somebody from a deficit position to a surplus position. Are there any others that you've had to deal with?
Hmm, not really because the other cities I've been in, the finances were pretty much under control. The only other things I would say would be, from time to time, you do have to deal with employee issues and sometimes those are difficult.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
You have my time to do. I'm a banker, Ted, so I like you already.
Which bank do you work for?
I work for Lake Michigan Credit Union. I've worked with several commercial banks over the years, but I'm working at a credit union now. So, finance is near and dear to my heart as well. So, I'm glad you have that background.
Well, thank you. And you know, I found in the business world, banking was a good, steady job with good benefits. You don't get rich, but it's a good working environment and you meet lots of interesting people.
You certainly do.
Combine that with government, you don't need to leave your house.
Right, right. I did. I'll tell you one quick story. I'll tell you one quick story. When I was mayor, we got invited to the Cleveland Clinic for a talk by George Bush, the second George Bush. And he gave a little talk and then afterwards, he stuck around and was going from one end of the audit... The stage to the other end. So, I positioned myself right in the middle and was able to shake his hand and get his autograph. And he looks at me and he says, "What do you do?" And I said, "I'm a local mayor." He says, "Well, why aren't you out there fixing the potholes?" He was a very, very personable president. I mean, he would look right at you and ask you a question. So, that was kind of nice.
What'd he answer? What'd he ask you if you were fixing... Why were you fixing the potholes?
I just said, I think I said, "We're working on it" or something. I was just so... I was just so overwhelmed that he would actually talk to me.
Yeah. My question is, since you're retired and Timmy talks, likes to talk about three days a week, but what if we decide we really need you more, are you willing to do that?
Well, yeah, sure. Because I thought initially it was going to be five days a week. So, as I said in the previous interview and this one, I'm available for whenever you need me. If it's three days, that's great. If it's four or five days, that's great. So being retired is, you can be very flexible. So the honest answer to that is whatever you need me, I'm there for. Maybe some, if you wanted to start off three days and then some days you say, well, you, you need to come in four days. So let, let's just be flexible. Whatever you're, the trustee and the board wants, I will work. And the same thing to reiterate, if you want me there three months, that's fine. If you want me there four months, that's fine. So everything is out there for, for, for doing the way you guys want it to do.
Have you thought about living situation? I guess just kind of on you, but not our problem, but I just was curious what you were thinking. Hotel stuff?
Well, again, when I knew I had this second interview, I was doing some research and there's a couple of options. There are a lot of apartments available. What I didn't, because they, they want you to give their, your name and your email or your phone number and they'll get back to you. I wasn't able to determine whether you could get a month-to-month lease or a six-month lease or whatever. And the other option could be the extended stay hotels or even something like Airbnb. So there's, there's a solution there. I haven't looked at it much until I get there and then I'll be able to take a closer look.
Okay. We can steer you away from some of the law. You might want to check with us before you, before you vote.
Well, you, you're, you're right, because when I was looking, I, I would say, well, this one looks pretty good, but I have no idea what kind of area I'm getting into.
Yeah, and there's some good deals on the internet.
Well, we got your back.
Yeah, we got, we got your back.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. The local knowledge there will be very helpful.
You have any questions for us?
Really not. I, I've done as much as I could. You asked some very good questions. I have a good idea what the community is about. I like the community. It's a very nice community to to work in. So I would ask you, when, when's your decision?
Today. Hopefully it will be today. Might have been yesterday. We have a special meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it. I, I looked on and they had the agenda and I was actually listed on the agenda, so. So when you make your decision, just let me know and then you can say, okay, we want you here, whatever day we want you to start and I'll be there.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you Ted.
All right, everybody have a nice weekend.
You too, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
It went to the stats right now. Oh yeah, there's Liz and Julie. I figured we'd pull everybody here unless somebody else.
What'd you say Jim?
I like the guy. I like if he can do everything that he says he can do. I think he's the right guy for us.
I wish he was twenty years younger than Ron Bullseye.
He never, he never known for stern to be there, but he was humble and yet he
And yet confident.
Yes, confident.
He has all experience that we can turn about. And what I like most is, I guess, is leadership and management style kind of tied together. So you're not gonna have a separation of, well, today I'm gonna be a full rewards leader and tomorrow I'm gonna be a country. He's got that pretty well under control where he involves entire staff and decision making, whatever possible.
I'm, I thought you'd say that. I liked it. I'm gonna watch, evaluate, learn the first three days. I'm like, it's not like he's coming with any, like you said, pre-terminating decisions. No, he is very well rounded, very experienced. I think that's one.
Ted, if he could put up one, who is phenomenal, he can put up with that.
I just think by the time you've worked that long, you've got a good balance of public and private sector experience. And by the time you've worked that long to retire, you've also acquired quite a bit of wisdom. And my, I have a little saying on my wall at home. Experience comes from what you have done. Wisdom comes from what you have done badly.
Oh, that's a good point.
So he has, he's been around the block. And
Another thing that
I like what I see.
Another thing that I really appreciated with him is that he identifies the weaknesses as intolerance to the way. But you know, he has my weakness. But he has, in his mindset, he sees word response to questions and bond to decisions and can't
Is that that natural leadership, problem solver kind of mentality? Because the fact that you're gonna be in an interim position four hours away, there's a lot of like potential questions. He's like handling it himself. That's what especially the managers, like the problem solver. I like how he's not putting any of the issues or questions that he's meant to be on.
Yeah, you have the concept, yeah.
Yep. And he's good, recognized that. And I like to see friends of our residents issue. I mean, I think that's been, at least from what we hear at board meetings, that's been you know, generally concerned. And I think that just knowing that he has this own internal drive to answer everything on that same day and not the next day. And the fact that he says, he's not always convincing people to answer that they like. He could have it.
Right.
But that's how it is. And I think we really need somebody that has that ability.
I like the flexibility, being able to come in as needed. You know, maybe three days a week, but if we, we got something going on like the the budget, the annual budget, and he has to be here for two weeks, five days a week. He's willing to do it.
He didn't mention this in this interview. I had to ask him a couple more questions in detail about budget because I was all excited about it. But he did say that he, which I think we have all kind of talked about in one way or another. He wants to start on active budget as soon as he could. Meeting with department heads to start getting the process role and doing the, you know, phases and all of that as it goes through. And he believes in really trying to go to start it early. And I think after we had interviewed him before, we discussed that it would be wonderful to have one of those, one last thing that the new person would have to take on or finish up to be able to have somebody with experience.
I think he's gonna finally come to the budget and finance support. It sounds like he went through the path in his place. He's gonna have heaven on his shoulders.
No, I was gonna give the same thing. More money, more problems. It's like
And he also came out to be very strong and careful with leaving plans a couple of decades ago.
Yeah. In your classic leadership, the administrative, like it's what we need, be a strong administrator. We, we are good at policy, you know, steering the ship, but we need strong leadership to we need administrators, financials, he's great. Like he doesn't, he doesn't have, it's hard to find someone who's not looking for full-time also. I mean, he, this is doing it because he enjoys it.
He's my guy.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we extend an offer to Ted.
Sure. But do we need to discuss any details?
I think you, I think you
And do we talk also about what Katie discussed with him today or not yet? Do we have to discuss money here?
I, I, I think that you, your committee ought to come up with that. Meet and discuss what is an appropriate plan. I don't, you know, we're all gonna have a difference of opinion. You interviewed three candidates, right? And you chose, I didn't see the other two, but you chose, in my opinion, probably the best one. So I think you, Timmy and Grace ought to get together and figure out what a compensation package ought to look like and then we can, if you want to do it by vote, by email or something to get our consensus. I, I don't think we should discuss it all right here.
No, and just technically we should be thankful to defer compensation detail, like to the committee because it needs some kind of order.
I think that's what I'm doing. I'm trying to do is defer to the committee.
Yeah, I just need any vote. Okay.
And then
Be helpful if I laugh. No, it's not, no.
And then the committee can get together and, you know, in conversations that you have with Ted the first time and after today, you probably have some idea where he'd like to be. And then just make that recommendation.
So Jim, that's part of the could be pre, I mean, pre-approve the manager search committee's recommendations as far as salaries, benefits, pre-approve it. So otherwise, could we, he's gonna want to, we would like him to start earlier than the next regular set of warranty, right? Or just warranted defer to the manager search committee and human resources support. Could we do something kind of broad, and I think you guys will understand everything. And we'll have to maybe put some details on it, but to make sure we are within compensation and benefits that our previous manager got, we are within that or below. We could
That's a good, that's a good frame.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. And my question is, are you okay with that? What if it's three days a week and we're still at that amount?
There's a salary position, isn't there?
Um, yeah.
Well, whatever case you have.
I think we need five right away because of just his assessing of what's going on. I think in the beginning, we need him full-time. Maybe later on this month, but I think in the beginning, he did say in my he was just really, like we were talking to that interview, that if he was in town for a few weeks, he would still be available in Ohio to do things at home, maybe you jump on Zooms or something.
Yeah.
And that he'd still be available if we didn't have it set up.
In town. Salary is hourly. And we have salaries, but, but then we'd have to figure out then his total, and that's what I'm getting, his total compensation package is what we'd have to figure out and as long as we have the benefits, who has everything, you know, retirement, all of that. If we could stay within that or below, that would be my feeling for everyone, that we can stay within that.
So what, what you could do is take the salary, whatever you decide for a five-day week, and if he wants to work three days, which I don't think he does, he sounded like five days right off the bat. Then equate that three days a week to, you know.
I'm thinking of per day amount.
Yeah.
Because then if he is here five days permanently around a three to four days, how does that amount, especially when we hire somebody new? If we start with a per day a dollar amount, then we know
But Wendy, the only issue with that is if we expect him to maybe, you know, something could happen, we say, okay, you're three days a week. Somebody comes up and we have to call him and talk to him. I mean, how do you set this, well, you know, I'm gonna pay you twenty-six and a half hours this week? Man, I think we almost ought to just set the expectation level. We're gonna be here five days a week. We're gonna pay you five days a week. If we don't think you need to be here on a Friday, for example, you're still on call. And if that might be a weekend, you might need to do something over a weekend. I understand.
And that's what we need in a key construction, problems the board, you know, what everybody thinks that you want for him. And if it's full-time, which is what I'm hearing, then I think, yeah.
So you don't need to restate the motion. I, I recommend that we extend an offer to Ted and that committee, search committee have the power to negotiate the salary and benefits as long as they don't exceed those that we'd need our prior manager. I'll support that.
Manager by trustee Kettle, supported by trustee Shipley to approve sending an offer as an interim manager to Mr. Andrews.
Go ahead, say it.
Including deferring to the manager search committee to handle the negotiation of all salary and benefits up to what the former manager was receiving, including taking into account what his benefits reward. All favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. So will we take you at dollar amount by four o'clock in the afternoon? For a meeting with that.
And Katie, thanks for the structure of this.
Yep. Public comment, anyone in person or Zoom? Did you Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that even though I wasn't here Wednesday, I did watch the meeting yesterday. And it is hard to hear you guys if you're not speaking right into your mic. So I just wanted to let you know that, that on the recording, you have to jack up. And when we, I, I have the same problem when I'm speaking, that female voices are harder to hear. So you just need to speak up a little bit.
He said, everyone sounded really good. And then all of a sudden, when you ah, and I said, well, that's because I tried to put it close to my face. But, but, good comment.
That's called wisdom.
Um, anyone in person? Is there a motion to adjourn?
She probably makes a motion for adjournment since the agenda of this meeting has been
Second. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Flair, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Which is sort of kind of Hi.